All right, it's time, so I'm gonna call the meeting to open order and we are in an open session and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Basically, we're just gonna be here for an informational on our athletic facilities options and so I will hand it over to the gentleman across the way.
Well, I'll start off by giving a little bit of an intro and as I do that Becky's gonna put the map we left off with last up on the screen. We began this process way back on March 8th in the high school commons when we met with all of our athletic advisory committee members. There were thirty, there are thirty-three people on that committee. There were about probably twenty-five people in attendance that night and I believe all of you were there as well. Besides Steve because he hadn't taken this position yet. We listened to what they had to say in regards to their concerns about the athletic facilities. There was a myriad of concerns from a variety of coaches, many of which we already knew just by living our days here in the school district of Amory. So over the course of the last nine months, this is actually the seventeenth public meeting we have had where we've discussed the athletics complex in some fashion. And we have worked side by side with Cross Anderson and LHB, our architectural firm, on creating a many, many versions of what you see on the screen. We've probably gone through well over a dozen iterations of what you see in regards to athletics. We are in a position now with last month's action by you to enter into resolution to borrow. So you have chosen to borrow five million dollars to dedicate towards athletics here on the school district of Amory campus. We have talked about having referendum contingency with each passing day where it's quiet, so to speak, on the referendum front with construction. We have a greater and greater possibility to put forward some referendum contingency money there too. And there are some other factors that exist in regards to finance that we'll get into tonight when the time is right. So what you see on the screen is the most recent version of the athletics complex. The only difference between what you see here and what you saw at the board meeting last is labels. I dropped some labels on there so it was easier to understand. Please know the first phase, if you will, that we talked about last time and Cross Anderson can chime in on this if you have any questions or make mistakes here. The first phase is the new football soccer and track complex, if that's what you choose to do in that location, and the varsity baseball field. So those two items plus the items that are in and around it that are involved in football soccer and track. You've got the soccer field, you've got the track, you've got bleachers, those types of things. That's phase one. That's approximately a six million dollar endeavor. If you add a JV baseball field, each field from what I've learned, if it's a natural grass field, you're adding about three to four hundred thousand dollars onto that budget. So call it six and a half for the ease of math. That would be, those would be the items that would be done with your six to six and a half million dollar price tag. The soccer practice field, that isn't new. That's the existing game field. It would simply become the practice field since the soccer team would play their games on the turf facility there where football and track is. That doesn't include anything in regards to softball. There is some contingency there for softball, but not a sizable contingency. There is some factors there in regards to the endowment of the Jorgensen's. That's part of the equation. The Jorgensen acquisition hasn't fully been completed yet. The city council has to meet as a planning commission and then has to meet as a city council. So the first or second week of January, that will likely be done according to the timeline provided to me by Pat of Yorkland, the city administrator. And it does not include any of the used soccer fields on the right side of Warrior Way. The football practice field obviously is an existing location and it would be just that a football practice field. So nothing, that's not new. That's a field that's already there. And then there are a few other items that would be subsequent phases potentially. You've got some parking lots, the one up by the tennis court. The parking lot that you see by the elementary is part of referendum. You can see the template of that. If you drive past that, you can, it's pretty implicit where that will be. And then I believe lastly, the only item I've left out of the picture is the new campus road. There are two versions of that. One where it runs past the east end of the varsity baseball field and runs straight out to the west. And then there's the option where it angles and goes on the south side of the softball fields. Again, please note that that land right now is not ours. That would be SMC's land and I have not engaged with SMC, waiting for the next two board meetings tonight and Monday to see where we sit on things and then we'll have that engagement. Either way, it gets you to Minneapolis and gets you on your way, so to speak. So that's a summary of what you see on the screen. I know that much of that you already knew. This is an occasion for you to engage about what you see. Questions, comments, suggestions, whether it be for me, the athletics department, Mr. Ferns here, Mr. Gould here, our principal principal and certainly our representatives from Cross Anderson. Troy Miller from LHB is unable to be here this evening. He has a family matter that he had to attend to. You could ask us certainly questions in regards to the finance of John or myself as well. So I'll turn it over to you and I'll stop talking. You've already heard enough from me.
The concessions, that's not the structure. We talked about a mobile.
We talked about mobile concessions. That's something that many districts are now doing. Mobile concessions has, I think, two inherent benefits. One, price tag, because when you do a concession stand, Gary said in my presence once, when I hear a concession stand, I hear a million dollars, which makes me a little sad, but that's reality. It also gives you a second option. You can do concessions at any number of events. If you're doing mobile concessions at football, you could easily do it at baseball, just driving down the road a little bit. You could do it with softball. You could, if you had used soccer fields, in the end, you could park them over there. I mean, mobile concessions gives you the option, I guess, to do any kind of concessions you want as well. You can rotate through various options. I mean, think of what options exist at Fall Festival. There are a lot of people out there that do that work. So I'm not sure if I'm speaking accurately in regards to price tags on concession stands, but I think they're pricey.
Yeah, it just, it kind of trickles into, then the bathrooms come into play and wants...
So earlier today, I just asked Joe, you were listening, in regards to this photograph with the new soccer fields and the football practice field on the bottom line, where it's kind of trapped here?
Right?
That's where...
Yeah. And, okay, so was this, for some reason, I just thought we would be, we had communicated about having a community come and use the track or have the ability to use the track or have like this down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
So is this like the twenty-year plan?
No. The first year, the first phase with certainty will be football soccer track. If this is what you choose to do, and varsity baseball field, that's first phase. If you did six and a half million, JV baseball field is part of that. Everything you see on... the middle school, that's year two or year three, if you choose to do that at all, because you're not obligated to do used soccer. But what I don't think we want to do is leave a facility that becomes a weed fest and is unused and is unsightly. The football practice field will certainly be used. Adding used soccer to the equation might be a nice move. We have well over three hundred kids playing used soccer in this community. So it's, obviously it would be heavily used, but we're not obligated to do that at all. It's merely an option.
How much is the roadway?
The roadway running to the east of the baseball field out to Minneapolis, the price tag that you had sent to me was about five, six hundred thousand.
And that's doable with the new financial kind of package that we spend?
Well, that, that would be, is the roadway down the...
Well, let's talk, because we're already talking about it. That's top finance and what we have available to spend on this project. You have the five million borrow. That's, that's an obvious, you know that. The referendum contingency, the numbers that we have used all along are somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand and one point two five million for site work. Much of this is site work. So I'd say to you approximately five point seven five, six point two five. But there's a couple of other factors in the mix. And I'm gonna turn over to John for that and he can give you the rest of that picture. So if we circle back to when our, when we first took our general opportunity to buy for the current forty-three and a half million dollar referendum, if you guys remember right, we contracted with PMA Investments who strictly does instructor institutional investments and are...
...ferging right around anywhere from two and a half to five percent of all of our investments. So earned investments to date as of today was just over one point one million. The projected by the time the project is completed and our disbursements are all kind of wrapped up, dollars, supposing there's no major financial crisis that happens or anything like that.
So if you add one to two million to the price tag that was five point seven five to six point two five, you're at somewhere between six point seven five and seven point two five.
But you won't know that till you get to the end.
We won't know that until we get to the end.
In the market to do anything, right?
Correct. We don't know that until the end.
Yeah, so as of today, it's one point one million and some change. That's guaranteed. That's out, that's liquid. It's, it's just sitting in a money market account, just accruing a tiny percentage.
No, I don't want to steal your thunder, John. I think I know where you're heading. What we do, what we do on projects such as this is you bid out all the work. There's no cost to us bidding out work. You have it all ready as add-ons and where you have money available, you do an add-on. If you have money available for the road, you do an add-on. Go ahead.
Yeah, you stole my thunder.
Okay, sorry.
Well, there'd be bid alternates, right? We'd pick the base project that we just talked about and, for example, the JV field could be an alternate. You'd have some minor costs, which would be the design for the civil engineer for LHB. But if you're gonna do some of that work someday anyways, it's not design going to waste. So we could prioritize those alternates. They come back for the board approval anyways. So once the bids do come back, we'd say, here's the base bid, here's the alternates, and then back into the budget.
So the number to use in your mind, grand total dollars available, five million borrow, one million for round numbers, one million in contingency gets you to six. Then you add seven or eight when you talk about the money accrued over the last year plus. So it could be upwards of eight million. Eight million will take care of nearly everything you see on the screen with the exception of the fields to the north of Warrior Way. And that would include the road.
And the road can curve if, when we acquire Jorgensen. That softball field will be shortened for the girls. So we would have seventy feet there basically to make that curve.
Yeah, the property line is right where you see the green grass or field become what looks like a baseball field. That's the property line. Literally right on the other side of the fence.
Yeah, and you're gonna shrink that fence.
And you're moving the fence in. I don't, maybe Jeff could answer this. I don't know what the length of the fence is right now, but I gotta imagine some.
It's three hundred.
It's three hundred to center.
So seventy-five feet, you're moving it in. So there's some room there to do that without having to touch, even touch SMC property.
Right, right.
So we could make that road happen or that road option happen without acquiring...
We could make that, we could make everything you see on the screen minus the used soccer fields happen in the summer of twenty-four.
That includes the issue with the ravine back there?
Yeah, I mean, they're adding all the fill-in.
Yep.
That was my next question. Have, they've done the soil borings?
No, no, I mean, there's assumptions, there's assumptions.
Yeah, so we don't know what kind of a sand left or whatever that football soccer field. Are you guys gonna explore an option of a storm sewer system?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because if we got the ravine there to the, to the south, it'd be like, well, rather than haul in, you know, so much sand.
Yep, right.
You know, we could run a storm sewer out that way for drainage for those fields.
Absolutely.
And some of the items are, you know, we can wait, again, like wait till, wait to see, how, how construction progresses, you know, some of those last items, they're standalone themselves, you know, some of the parking lots or the, the used soccer fields on that side. We need to keep that complex in place anyways. I mean, that's where, you know, the football, football's still gonna practice there in August. You know, the hope is that, you know, the plan is to have the stadium complete by the start of football season or the start of the first game, but most likely they're gonna have to practice there, you know, during, during the month of August. It actually benefits us by just having that, that area available and away from construction.
We will have to work with the coaches on the phasing, right? Because of, now that everything's on the other side of the road on, we're gonna take that field away. And the sooner we can start the football field, the better, but we understand baseball has a season too. So I haven't worked out all those details, but done it many times.
If we keep getting winter like this, the baseball season should move along very quickly.
If you start right now.
You could play today.
I'd be willing to go. Well, is there a chance of playing baseball on one of the Jorgensen fields?
We actually have worked with the city of Osceola and would use their field as like our game field, their community field.
This would need too much work to...
No, we have the logistics figured out. I mean, practice days would be difficult if we didn't have a field, but we would make something work. Either on Jorgensen, that second Jorgensen field for practice, or use our neighbors, Clear Lake.
Our coaches understand the endgame and all this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever it takes.
So when we talk about JV field being a potential second phase, what do you do for JV?
Well, you could start the JV games earlier in the day, but that would maybe tax districts getting their kids out of school early and whatnot. But something we've done in the past is if varsity is home, JV would be on the road. So let's use Osceola as an example. The varsity would come here and the JV would play on their varsity field. Knowing that this is just a one or two-year deal is something we've done in the past. We currently do that for C-Team baseball because people don't have three baseball fields in their community to play on, so.
Jonathan, did you do a graph on how this is gonna be paid for?
We have the graph that Becky had mocked up that John can work on that you've seen before. Becky's gonna put that up.
Yeah, is this the one you're talking about?
Who are you talking to?
So I was, I guess there's also some other questions I have. Again, is, I mean, this one point one million of investments of taxpayer money, how is that utilized? I guess, I don't even know how that's utilized.
Yeah, no, that, that's a great question. So first and foremost, you, you have a couple of different options. The first one is you can use it, which is what Baird has told me is the common, is using it for those contingency projects, because most projects end up over contingency, not under on contingency. But it has to fall still within the scope of the original referendum questions. And if you remember, our original referendum question includes site work. So we've already been in conversation with Thomas Griggs who agrees that the site work for those varsity athletics falls in the purview of the original referendum question. So that's what, you know, and Debbie was gonna get me the more statistics, but you guys could chime into. I mean, that's what the vast majority of districts do at that. Because the reality is that the other option is you can do defeesance on your loan. So you can do, you can do cash defeesance. But keep in mind, over the course of twenty years borrowing forty-three and a half million dollars, the defeesance on two million dollars nets out to be, you know, seventeen cents, I think is the way the math works out, back into every taxpayer's pocket. So it's one of those situations where it's, what's the better use of this money? It's already accounted for. The referendum's already there. It's not costing anybody any additional money outside of the referendum. So what's the best use of those funds? Which is why I believe most districts choose to roll that back into the project.
So what you see on the screen is how would you, this is a graphic that depicts how you, would you pay for Jorgensen field and further what is the impact on our budget moving forward in regards to the five million dollar borrow. Maybe you can talk about those two items.
Yeah, I mean, so the, the, what we're gonna look at is we're gonna look at the tallest graph or that light pink. Maybe I'm colorblind, but that's the color that I always see. Okay, good. So, yeah, the, the question has been raised before, well, how are we gonna pay for Jorgensen field? Well, that's gonna be in that twenty-three, twenty-four column with our current debt service being ninety-nine thousand dollars instead of the some two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. We would use the difference in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year and the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year to purchase that. As far as how we are paying for that in the future moving forward, if you look at the first, the darker red line, that would have been, that's both the three million dollar athletic facility and the baseline. You see a small spike in twenty-four, twenty-five when you have your initial interest payment, but outside of that, that's where we already are in our Fund Thirty-Eight debt service as of last fiscal year. Where the difference gets made up between that and the top of that bar graph right there, that's when we start talking about using our recurring referendum monies proceeds as well as just general budget, coming straight out of the operational budget. Yeah, so if you, does that, does this help at all, Joe?
And remember, the debt service that we have already scheduled is ninety-nine thousand this year, then fifty-five thousand for the next four years, and then we are completely debt-free of all previous debt. And that allows us to pursue this option and the five million dollar option is where you're at. So your annual payment is four-thirty. The existing line item was two-thirty-one. Where's the rest coming from? It's coming from two-thousand-seventeen referendum dollars that were devoted towards building the grounds with the idea that we're checking the box on most every number one on the deferred maintenance study. We are checking every single one. It literally is the case. Will there soon be something that was a two that becomes a one? Well, that certainly is possible, but we've hit the big boxes for certain. So that'd be what it would look like over the course of the next twenty years, what the, the dynamic would be.
And the balance left over from that seven hundred thousand dollar budgeted.
Is building grounds.
Is still gonna end up being one to five hundred thousand dollars.
For building and grounds, which most districts don't have any money extra for building and grounds. It comes from a whole nother place. This is the benefit of the twenty-seventeen referendum. We still have five hundred thousand a year to tackle the things we need to tackle. In conversation with Cross Anderson and also with George, I just don't see what the number ones on the near horizon would be. We literally have checked the boxes on all of the big tickets here in the district. And I don't want to jinx us, but holy cow, we have really tackled a lot of them, if not all of them.
Well, that's what I, I think we have tackled or trying to tackle a lot. And again, I, you all know me. I'm just worried about money of this. And when we, when we talked to the community, you know, it was tough to get a, it was tough to get me to three million. And then it was even tougher to get me to five million. But then now the really big picture is, is after all this, we're gonna be over eight, over eight million to get everything we want.
But remember the...
I, I'm just saying, if you would've told me, Joe, this is eight million right off the bat, I probably would've said, Keith, I think you're right. We should go to referendum. That's a ton of money.
Yeah. Then we look at the financial structure of what is happening here. I think it, new to the board, that seven hundred thousand here, that, that's the recurring one that we did, the one point nine million. And that was designated for that. Now, we can shuffle that around, but even making the payment, that's what I was worried about. But even making the payment on this, we still leave almost a half a million dollars in that fund annually to take care of whatever pops up. So it isn't like we completed that to zero and we're now gonna be going, well, I guess we're gonna cut something here, pay for this or whatever. We've got that, that nice cushion.
And I was thinking we're gonna need more, I mean, more Reggies. We're gonna need more staffing, like people to actually maintain the, the grounds, equipment, everything.
I'm not sure that we will for certain. I think there is upkeep that needs to occur on an artificial turf surface. We're actually on this diagram cutting down on the amount of lawn we're mowing. We're not doing snow removal, so we wouldn't have to snow remove on that new road if in fact that happens to be the case. Your artificial turf surfaces require a different kind of care, which is less frequent and less time intensive. We're not lining as many fields. I don't know that we'll need more building and grounds people. We may, but I don't think so.
And I, I'm not sure. I guess I have the same kind of concerns that I'm not sure that we need more people to add in. Maybe that would happen down the road. But the biggest concern I have is that we get the people that we have appropriately trained. And I would like to then hire a consulting firm that would come in for a couple of years and make sure that we train our staff in the right way to take care of the artificial turf so that it lasts and we get our money's worth out of it. And I think if you pull a lot of the high schools that have put in artificial turf and left the maintenance to their ground crew, I think you'd find out that a lot of them have said that that would be beneficial to do that. But I think with the money that we still have left in our building and grounds, we can put a line item in to accommodate for that for a couple of years and some of the equipment that we're gonna need and the impact testing that I'm pretty adamant that I would like to have done with putting in artificial turf. And Reggie's sitting here and, and so, I mean, do you feel confident that if given artificial turf today, that you have the skills and abilities to maintain that?
I'm not sure.
I think, I think additional training at, at any level for all of our employees is important and we stick a lot of money into additional training for our teachers and our admin staff. And I think our building and grounds crew should be no different. And I think we can do that through the amount of money that we still have left over.
We all should remember though, when you look at, let's look at the five million dollar line, because that's what you chose to do last month. There's no tax impact on that five million dollar line. That's all within the revenue limit. That four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollar payment comes from money that already exists in the budget. If it's not spent on this, it would be spent on something else within the budget. This isn't new tax dollar. The referendum contingency money, that's not new tax dollar. The interest accrued, that's also not new tax dollar. If you're talking about eight million makes you nervous, eight million would make me nervous as well if we were going to referendum, because that would be a massive tax impact that we're not interested on, in, based on what we already just did here in two thousand twenty-two. This is all money accounted for in the budget via referendum and via referendum again to accomplish an eight million dollar or sole project that is a game changer for the next fifty years in athletics around here, which will benefit everybody.
I do think that, like, instead of looking at it as like an eight million dollar total package and then you'd say like, that's a lot of money. But if we're doing this, like, basically out of that five million dollar base without raising taxes and getting basically another three million dollars bang for your buck, is how I look at it. And that we can address so much more and especially that road going in, like, I think it's just has to be the most fiscally responsible way that we can do the most things that we need to have done that you can do as a board. And that's really what our job comes down to is being as fiscally responsible and conservative as we can be. I think this nails it.
But, yeah, and again, we're at a point where you said needs to be done, but this is all naces and wants to be done. This is, none of this is a need.
Well, I would contend it's a need. You talk to the football program and then talk to the kids that are getting hurt every single practice. I would think it's a need.
I get it, it's a sport.
No, I didn't say it was a sport. I said kids are getting injured on our athletic surfaces. That's a need in my mind. If we care for their safety, it's a need.
And you're right, I agree. Maybe it isn't a need, but it's a future vision of our campus. I, I look at it that way and say, what are we gonna add that's going to last us twenty, thirty years to this facility, the way it's sitting? That's, you know, they adding a Jorgensen, putting a road out there to relieve congestion. Those are things I think that are really gonna enhance what we already have here.
And I agree, Joe. I think you're absolutely right too, that it's, this is, some of this is a want and not a need. But if you're gonna have the athletic program, then you have to maintain it, just like we do any of the rest of our building and grounds or our buildings, that it's our responsibility to maintain it or make it the best that we can for what we have. I think the can was kicked down the road long enough that we have to do something or the possibility of not having sports at all. And I'm not sure that that would be a popular appetite in the community to have either.
Football field's forty-three years old. That practice field is unplayable. I have no interest in putting that football team on that practice field this coming fall with the amount of injuries. We've got people in the room who've had kids who have been injured on that field because of the quality of the field. If we're gonna practice on that field, I, I think we should probably just move our practices to our playing field that we have right now. And when that's unplayable, we just don't play home games. Or we fix it now. And we've chosen to do that by borrowing five million, because that's a number one topic, that football, track and soccer facility. If we borrowed five million not for that, then I'm not really sure what we borrowed five million dollars for, because obviously it's five million dollars.
Yeah, and I voted, I voted yes for five million and thinking, think, again, and I'm just putting, giving you my opinion. And that, again, I listen to all you. And again, like I said, Keith, I was listening to you initially when you said you wouldn't mind this going to referendum for people to be able to vote and see it. And, but again, it's just like me. I think I'm doing the take back on, oh, man, I was really pushing five for me. And then now we have one point... I was really pushing five for me, and then now we have 1.1. We're going to take out of taxpayer, you know, investments to where I still like to think that even with a half a million, which doesn't get us very far, it seems like, we still have rainy day fund almost stuff. And, and that's what I think that investing is for. And, but you're just getting me a little uncomfortable outside the box of now we're talking eight plus million. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I think that we all understand that. I, do you have like an idea that you would rather see happen with that money than have it go towards this project? Like what would that, what would your vision for that, like, let's quote unquote, extra $3 million be?
Well, I, I don't, I don't, again, I, I don't really, I didn't come here with that type of vision yet. Um, I, I'm actually just also like probably a lot of other people amazed at how much stuff costs. And I guess I don't know those costs yet. But, no, I don't have a solution for you of what $3 million we could do with. But I'm just saying that initially, when we communicated at the first steps of, and I, I've been to every meeting. You know, again, I just, I just find it hard to swallow the eight, the big picture number after the years of getting this done.
Eight's on the low end. These gentlemen do referendum projects for a living. Eight's on the low end. If you did this referen, this did this project via referendum and did it right, am I wrong to say it would be 12, 15 million?
In terms of.
If you did everything that is, he needed, he needs to be addressed. I mean Baldwin's project was 12 million. That's sort of, in my mind, in the Middle Border Conference, that's about the top of the top, cream of the crop. Yes, Jeff, I mean, you've been to them. I mean, that's a $12 million project. I mean, you could spend a lot more than eight.
I, I think that's where my comment was of like, like the biggest bang for our buck and being as fiscally responsible as we can be. I think in my mind, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, $8 million is a lot. I mean, when we sat at that, that first meeting and somebody said, well, like, $6 million is nothing. I'm like, I beg to differ. I, I borrow money. I, but for $8 million to get done what we want to get done and a road to, like, that benefits everybody, every single person that comes on this campus to do a road like that. I mean, every single person that comes on here and picks up kids and fights with the traffic patterns and like, that would be priority one in my mind. Hell, before the practice, before all the fields would be priority one in my mind. But if we can get that done and not have to borrow down the road later, I just don't see how you can go wrong doing that now, taking that investment. I mean, it literally is an investment.
That, that was the other thing I wrote down here. And, and again, this isn't the Jovier Kent time, you know, question time. This is, I think, everybody time. But is there a difference between infrastructure roadway versus sports complex?
A difference? What do you mean by difference?
Of how this should be funded.
I think it all comes in the same spot. You're talking site work when you put in a road.
Okay.
You're also talking a connection directly to the athletic facilities that run past, runs past soccer, softball and baseball. So I think it's very connected. You had something, look, the period, you had something to say a moment ago.
Nope, nope. You had it, it was covered.
Yes, I believe it is connected to athletics, but it is connected to daily life. For those who pick up and drop off on this campus, who all full well know that. It's not a good scene. If you're at the intermediate school, you got, you got one way out.
Yeah.
And your one way out is going downward your way. And I, I wish you well.
And I, I'd say if I was, still had kids in this district, I, I struggled with it for the better part of 20 years, dropping and picking up kids out of this district.
Ryan and Jessica and I met last week, or actually earlier this week in regards to road. Does this, the map, can you see the intermediate school? I forgot how far down this goes. And I don't, I'll get up so you can see what I'm talking about. Well, we had talked about.
Red pointers.
I know, I was thinking that earlier.
Pointer. So this is the, the outline of the intermediate school building. This is right now, you can see it in this picture, this is drop off. These folks are lined up for drop off. Now what folks have started to do is they're lining up here as well. They're there about 2:30, 2:45, and they're coming here, swinging through, grabbing kids and going. We hold them until bus traffic's out of the way. The morning time, you're swinging right through here through a parking lot, where there are, where there's a lot of foot traffic, is not safe here either. So what we had talked about, this road coming in, whether it's a straight shot or it's an angled shot coming in, having another turnaround right here, having a turnaround, so you can drop a kid and go. You don't have to come into here at all. You are over here.
Yeah.
You drop a kid and go. So we're not interested in buses off campus. And we could talk about bus routes. The last stop is at the elementary school, and then they're on their way. We're interested in getting people out of the way of the buses. And the traffic that's in the way is not high school drivers. They're either gone, or they're staying because they got sports. The, the drivers, and it's no fault of theirs that are in the way, are folks that are picking up intermediate, elementary and middle school kids, because those kids don't drive. So it would help siphon off at least a quarter, if not more, because now you've got middle school. If you just have a middle school kid and you live to the south or you live to the west, you can come in here, grab them and go right back out. If you drive down this road, that's going to be an issue. If you live to the west or the south, you're probably not swooping all the way around. You're probably wanting to come in over here if you can. So it just gets some people out of the way, which could make Ryan's life much easier.
And if you're talking like pickup from school, a lot of parents like go and run errands. And if you're going to get gas or you're going to go to the grocery store, whatever, all that's on the, you know, a lot of that is on the south end of town. So it's easier to just boogie right out of there and get down to the south end of town.
It would affect your elementary pickup too. I mean, it would, it would really make it a lot better.
Hugely, hugely.
Now you don't have all the, the intermediate and middle school families going past the elementary school.
Yeah.
Right. In the elementary, and remember the pickup, drop off procedure for the elementary is the parking lot you see sketched in there behind the elementary, because that's your common entry point. So that's also going to be a game changer, because now you then have buses in the front, staff parking in on the west side or the north side, and then your parents are dropping off. And there's parking spots there, so you could park and walk your kid in. Which right now, if you park and walk your kid in, even without construction, it's a little sketchy in front of the elementary. There's a lot going on.
And people are yelling at you, literally yelling at you.
So there's the option to park your kid and walk your kid in, or just swing around and drive on and be on your way. So that's a good thing too. And that's already something that is being done. It's all, you can literally see the template, the footprint of it right now.
All right. Well, I'm gonna go on. Lights at the baseball field, are they any part of this? What phase are we looking at year-wise for those?
Yeah, lights at the, lights at the football field.
The baseball, I mean.
Yeah, but not baseball, but that certainly could be one of those alternates that could fit.
If you're, if you're operating with 6 million, it's only football. If you're operating with your 8 million, then we have lights at baseball, but also at softball.
Correct.
Baseball, JV and varsity and softball. If you have lights at, at football, soccer track, JV baseball, varsity baseball, softball, you have now changed Jeff's world in a very significant way, because that looks very different than it did before. That would be a game changer. Because remember, you're also, softball fields are going to be the same dimensions as youth baseball. Youth baseball would be under the lights three, four nights a week. I talked to Connie Jorgensen shortly after you agreed to do the borrow. She was overseas on a trip, and she was in a Christmas village in Europe. And I'm not sure why she was more excited about the Christmas village in Europe or Jorgensen Field coming back to life. I think it's probably Jorgensen Field. So, good thing, because youth baseball is an all-summer long deal, every night of the week.
So we're going to do youth baseball at Jorgensen Field?
It's the same dimensions.
Yes.
Good.
It's 200, 215, 220. That's exactly what those fields are. Because they're playing on fields that are 300, and it's sort of silly, because the outfielders are just on the edge of the infield. Softball's that way.
You, you could argue the booster program is going to use those fields more than our school programs, just because of how their seasons lay.
Right.
And their options within our community on what fields they can currently play at. So in, in terms of the JV baseball field and the lights, I personally would rather see the JV baseball field come to fruition first and then get the light second, because schools like to come here and play two games at the same time. They don't necessarily want to play the JV first and then the bar, it gets to be a long night for them, so. But that's just my recommendation.
And my next question, the range of cost of turf. We've talked about we're gonna, we're gonna see turf and that, so, you know, obviously that's a big ticket item. So what is the?
Are you talking turf football and you're talking turf varsity baseball?
Both, each separate, however you want to cut the cards? Because I would assume the football, soccer is going to be more plush and more costly.
Yep. And, and we'll bring in, like I said, we'll bring in a couple turf con, like contractors. And they'll, and they'll lay out their six different types of carpet and.
Infill.
Infill and pile depth and, and there'll be a cost associated. $4.50 a square foot, and this is the $5 a square foot cost. And, and then you guys get to decide like what, which one fits best for.
So what?
And it's all different, you know, and some people are like, we're a soccer school and we want to play really fast. Like, so this is the type of turf we want. And no, we're a hard-nosed football school and we want to be really slow and soft and.
So we have $5 a square foot plugged in right now.
Yep.
Um, which is going to be middle of the road. I mean, it, it could come in the low fours or up towards six. And a lot of it's just depending on the type of grass, how many blades per inch, width of the filament, the type of fill. Not a big difference between all of them, except for maybe the height of the pile. But it, it, it's a nice turf.
And that $5 per square foot includes the, the fill too, the infill?
The infill, but not everything underneath it.
No, but the.
So there's another $5 a square foot plus, just to do the granulars and the drain tile under.
Yes. Yeah, the different though, that's all. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we know what's around us? Or Jeff, do you happen to know what? I mean, do we have, we have an ability to get that information and find out how they like it?
Well, we know Baldwin's, because these gentlemen did Baldwin.
Yeah, we have Baldwin, Hudson, and we'll be, we, we know all the, the other people, so we'll be able to get the other districts.
Yeah, and we have two local schools who have turf, turf baseball fields, River Falls and Baldwin. So talking to their coaching staffs about the depth of the turf and whatnot, I think would be important, because, you know, there's just not as many of them around right now. To go off, football's more popular, soccer's more popular.
Right. Well, and I want to base the decision through the folks that are using it, right? And the folks that have had experience with it.
Correct.
Obviously, money's a part of that, but.
And you'll all be here when you bring in the, the contractors?
So what we do is, once LHB puts together the bid documents, we put it out to probably three, at least three manufacturers, maybe four turf manufacturers. We typically will select the two competitive, maybe three, and then we'll bring them in for interviews. And then we just, it's more of show and tell, right? Everybody's turf is better than anybody else's, so it's a lot of a sales pitch. But then you go off references. And where have you put this field in? Because we certainly took and bids, even when we did Stillwater's, which they did a lot of square feet of turf. You know, they didn't do a lot in the Midwest. And their price is really low, because they wanted to get into the Midwest. So we had two or quite a ways just to look at a turf field. That's just an example. I'm not saying you're going to do that.
It's really interesting, because John and Gary were both part of an email chain last week. I got clear, out of the clear blue sky from Bigfoot High School Athletic Director. Jeff got it as well, and so did Josh, a turf company that did their turf in Bigfoot. Bigfoot's down by Lake Geneva, if you don't know. And Troy, I think it was Troy or John traced who it was. They're based out of Texas.
I did, yeah.
And I'm not sure, but I'm thinking they probably have a lot of turfed football fields in Texas. And they probably are not the $5 square foot variety. So it's, they clearly know who's doing what, because I had no idea Bigfoot was watching what we were doing in Amory. That's five hours from here. So that was interesting that I got that email. They're watching.
And it was a firm out of Texas.
I'm also not sure if we have that football player that plays in Amory. Maybe we do, but I, I'm not sure.
Yes, it's football in Amory isn't like football in Texas.
Probably not, probably not.
It's like wrestling in Amory.
There you go.
That will wrestle them.
References is probably the biggest important part of those interviews. I mean, just so you know, you got, you know, good experience.
I'm curious on the equipment too. I know we, somebody had talked about when you line up a turf, you know, sale, they provide some kind of equipment to maintain it. My assumption is that it's going to be like when you buy a tree stand and you get a crappy harness, but at least you get a harness. So is the, is the equipment they provide something that you need to seriously take a look at, getting something different?
Yep. I mean, we'll, we'll put that into their scope, you know, when they bid it. Like, we, we want, want X or, you know, this type of equipment. And then you can, you can also roll in like the maintenance, we want a three-year maintenance plan, which, which is them coming up with their people to, to go through with the staff and say, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do the maintenance this fall and they'll, they'll show everyone how to do, do it and train people appropriately.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, and you can roll that all into the.
Package.
Their price of their bid when they.
That'd be fantastic.
I've done a lot of research on equipment too, talked to a lot of people. And that's what they said, that recommend researching and get it included in your, in your deal. Don't sell them cheap as. You get the best price right there when you're trying to negotiate a million-dollar turf contract. They're still in there, groomer or whatever.
Fantastic.
Are those, that equipment you're looking at, is it, is it its own separate equipment versus just a drag behind some piece of equipment you already have?
Yeah, they're, they're mostly like their own.
Self-propelled.
They're all pulled behind. They're, starting from this, you pull behind like our gator. It's something that would need a three-point tractor that needs the hydraulics and a certain amount of horsepower. It actually has vacuums and it was quite the array of stuff. Yeah, so you probably had 20, 20 different varieties that you could choose from.
Right, because there are standalone, single-operated, like magnet sweeps and things like that. Or you can get a pull behind. I mean, yeah, done the, looked down to. So they come in both.
Yeah, there's sweeps, there's groomers and there's, you know.
Rakes. That's the other chief.
I'll switch total gears now.
You got a list.
Well, yeah.
It's like Santa over here, checking it twice.
You know, with what you're saying, Joe, and, and the 1.1, you know, I mean, I'd been an advocate years ago for build our fund balance. Because when we build our fund balance, it helps our borrowing rating and everything like that. And so, you know, that 1.1 million could go to the fund balance.
Actually, it can't.
Well, it can't, I suppose, because it's part of the.
Correct. Correct. Your two options are deficits.
But you can always switch to what you're doing and pull out, like, of the 700 that we have budgeted. We could take that out and put it to a fund balance and then use the 1.1 million for the grounds that we're doing it. So I mean, you can.
You, you, yeah, I, the, the issue's going to be how much of the scope of this work is actually classified as site work.
And as I go on, you'll understand where I'm going.
Yeah, okay.
So, but we're already at a place where we've borrowed the money, we've locked in our interest rate. So we're not looking at the horizon very far, or lo, well, we're looking 20 years down the road, basically, before we would have to borrow again.
You haven't locked in your interest rate yet.
What?
That doesn't happen until you get a little further along.
Right, but.
You've agreed to borrow.
Forty-three and a half.
Oh, that, yes, that you have. That you have.
So that, that's the one I guess I, I think about, because, you know, then you could shorten up your short-term borrowing, our 2 million that we just signed up for. But in that picture, we save what, 15,000 a year in interest, roughly?
Roughly.
So that's really not that big of a deal either, to take and try and put that into a fund balance, to raise that up. So we're not borrowing quite as much in those peaks and valleys.
I would maintain if you don't take the money you have now and apply it towards athletics, you're going to pay significantly more later.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I guess with Keith's point there, is that if we're doing all of this now and using this money now, and we still have that money left in our building and grounds fund that we don't need to pull out every year, we could use that then to go into our fund balance and build our fund balance at the end of the year, if we needed to do that. And that's something that we've talked about with the auditors and getting that up. And you're right, it does help with the credit. Hopefully, we don't have to look at that for a long, long time, because we have this 43 and a half million dollar referendum. But just having that fund balance just is a good cushion and possibly down the road, that we wouldn't have to do the short-term borrowing for how that funding lines up, that we can use that fund balance to help pay our employees, that we don't have to do that short-term borrowing if we build that fund balance.
Yeah.
Is that the big purpose of the fund balance?
Well, fun, fund balances, it's interesting.
Right. Well, I remember seeing, I remember seeing percentages that they said they wanted you to be at.
Yeah, yeah, 15 to 20% is the, is the sweet spot. I mean, obviously, if you can, can add more, that's outstanding. But the reality with fund balances, fund balance does not necessarily equal cash. There's a cash percentage, there's a percentage of it that is cash, but it's less than 25% that's actual cash. The rest of it is, is basically it's your, your Moody's rating, it's your credit rating, it's your, your kind of your, your rainy day emergence.
Your rainy day emergency type things. Does that make sense? Because when you have a year where you might have to deficit spend, you can cut into your fund balance versus. Just going flat out broke, but it doesn't tie directly to cash. So our fund balance right now at three point six million dollars sits right about twelve and a half percent. And every year we're continually adding, very modestly adding to it, but as much as we can. Um, and to to Keith and and Shar's point, yeah, that would absolutely help if we had a year where we had zero usage. Of that facility's money, um, that can roll straight into fund balance if we wanted it to.
I think that's like the fiscally conservative and the fiscally financial or the the fiscally. Responsible part of this for me is thinking about all of those things and how you move this money and how much you're gonna get, be able to get taken care of now. Um, we're really looking at, if you're looking at forty-three and a half million dollars plus another eight, you're looking at fifty-one, fifty-two million dollars. Worth of work done literally to just have borrowed only the forty-three and a half million dollars, raising taxes on forty-three and a half million dollars. Referendum money. So if you've put this off and you don't do it, you're gonna end up having to do it somewhere down the road. And it's gonna cost the taxpayers more, in my mind, if if I'm right about that assumption.
I believe you are, but you sort of have already gone that direction by borrowing five million. If it isn't for athletics, I'm not sure what it's for.
I mean, if we don't do the the next step of the three million dollars.
Yeah, I think we've learned over the last few years of what inflation will do to us.
Right, so, right.
Yeah.
And so that that one point one million in interest put towards this project is probably going to net us more than the interest rate. Would be by far, if we put it off for a year or two. So let's say we put it off until the phase two of the two years. Yeah, the the interest would just be eaten up.
Yes.
On that.
Yeah, and the cost would be more. I mean, that you're literally, your cost is going to be more to do that later.
I think now is a great time to do this. We have, uh, we got the five million, we're looking at another. Seven hundred and fifty to one point two from a referendum contingency. We got the investment money of one point one today, potentially of two.
It depends on if Kraus Anderson keeps slowing down the draw schedule.
No pressure.
Is this where we love this doing?
We're not spending it fast enough, it's a good thing.
That's a great thing. Regardless, we have the, we have seven, eight million dollars with no additional tax impact. Now, I mean, now is the time, in my opinion, now is the time to do this. Seven, eight million, a lot of money, no doubt, but, um, this is a thirty to forty-year investment, in my point, in my my mind. For the, you know, for the school district, so, um, I think, I think it's a great plan.
Are you comfortable with the, I'm talking to you, not just Dale, the board comfortable with the placement of the items that you see on the screen? The fields and the locations? Cause what I have tentatively on the meeting agenda for for Monday is approval of set design. Now, obviously, there are things that you could never know. I mean, where is there gonna be a sidewalk in there? So that's not approval and design, that's not yet on here. But yeah, there are walkways and so forth, but are you comfortable with where things are located?
I like it. I I think, you know, we, I, for those of you don't know, um, three of, three of us board members sat here on November eighth. With LHB and Kraus Anderson, um, for two and a half hours and reworked this from all the other options. That we had had seen prior to this and it was a well-spent, in my mind, two and a half hours. Probably the most productive two and a half hours that we've had in this boardroom. Uh, when it comes to planning and long-range planning for this campus and this facility. Troy was great at picking fields up, moving them, fitting things in. We explored a lot of options. I think, I like it. I'm happy with this design. I'm I'm a big proponent of this design. I think it hits all the boxes. I think we we gain the most, retain the most green space that we can that's usable. For the, and I think we just hit as many sports as we possibly can with leaving this, putting this design the way it is. And it leaves us a contingency, leaving that old football field in case things don't get done. It gives us a space for the middle school football to play, the flag football to play, um, our youth tackle football to play. Or youth, uh, yeah, our youth tackle football. It gives us a a real myriad of options. I, you know, I understand the scared about having this become a wasteland, but I I just don't see that that's gonna happen. I I think that we have a strong building and grounds crew that's not gonna let that happen. And I think without investing a whole ton of money into it, it's still gonna be a productive place for a lot of kids to have a lot of good experiences here. And putting this new facility and I think it's, I like it. I I think you're just really getting the most bang for your buck out of this design.
Any concerns with throwing events across the road?
It's funny you should mention that because the only item that we've been hung up on is an item we sort of haven't settled. Uh, in our conversations and that is the placement of home plate for varsity baseball and JV baseball. Yes, where you've got them positioned right now is makes perfect sense. There are two factors we've talked about. One, follow balls into field events. You're doing the pole vault, now you're getting smoked by a follow ball, that's not gonna work. The other is the sun. Are you as a shortstop, third baseman in left field on that varsity baseball field staring into the sun? Or are you as a pitcher or a hitter staring into the sun? We've talked ad nauseam about this with our coaches. We've had conversations with K A, LHB, Jeff, Josh, with everybody. I, it's hard for me to break the light, where's the sun at four thirty in the middle of May, to know that.
Cause it's always in your eyes when you're playing baseball.
Uh, Matt Pedersen's the only concrete statement that I've heard. He says, when we've played softball, the sun's never been an issue based on where it's positioned. But when I umpire for JV baseball, I'm always staring into the sun. So for what it's worth, that's what he said. And again, JV baseball is down on the corner where it's his new campus road.
It's just JV.
If you wanted to say anything on Jeff or your questions or Kraus Anderson, it's, I mean, that's a, that's a factor.
I I I think we'll do some, continue to research on that. I mean, it's a big decision. Once the facility's there, it's there. And I think, you know, what we do is we look at neighbors and other folks who have put in fields and have conversations with them about. You know, where's the sun at five o'clock in the afternoon during the spring season?
Cause I think the option we talked about, Jeff, is your your moving home plate along where that road that goes north or east west on there. Moving your whole plates there and obviously that has a domino effect and what does that do then? Is it if it's over there?
River Falls and Baldwin both have new facilities. Both of their fields, varsity fields face northeast. So what this would potentially mean is you may, you know, where the outfield is, you might have your home plate. You know, but it's just, it's just conversation to have. I think it's an important conversation to have and again, we're obviously gonna make sure.
If you flip your home plates, you eliminate your follow ball issue, cause if you're gonna hit field events from home plate being on the other side, that's a four hundred foot shot. High school kids aren't hitting four hundred foot home runs.
And how many times do we have like home baseball games with like track at the same time?
The the thing with track is it's more of like when they're practicing, but typically their practice is over by five, five thirty, baseball starts at five. But like when they're both practicing after school, you know, that's when we're hitting a lot of, you know, batting practice on the fields and. Baseballs and softballs are going all over and so.
You get to put a pretty good sized net though, if you had to.
Yeah, I mean, there's like like at New Richmond, their field, um, they kind of have their, I don't know, city center hockey arena across the road. And so they have cables that run fifty feet in the air and, you know, they have a net that they pull across.
It's two things, not just a net or a fence, but the distance between home plate and the fence.
Yes.
If it's closer to home plate, which our baseball field right now is really far away, about half that distance is what baseball thinks is best. If you had a fence and then it's curved at the top or a net, you're gonna catch most of that. It's on this particular design, you'd have to have, you'd have to be concerned about your your lo, your long shots down the left field line. Or your pop-ups over that fence down the left field or down the right, yeah, left field line. You would potentially run into issues with your track participants. Those are just placeholders. Those are not exactly where those are going to be.
And a lot of, a lot of the times like that home plate decision, like it's not, it's somewhat, sometimes based on the logistics of. Home plate puts everything close to one area, you know, the way it was laid out this year. But, you know, it's closer to parking, like if you swap, if you swap them around, okay, well now, where are we gonna park to get to the stand for the baseball field? And right or wrong, you know, what that, you know, the pros and cons of that.
And I imagine most folks wanna sit near home plate, not out in left field.
Yeah.
But but the other thing with this is, do you want the home plates for both the fields to be in the same general area? To be able to maximize the concrete or do you have them both aligned with the strategic northeast direction? Which means their home plates would not be in the same general areas each other.
So someone that can domino to, all right, well now we have to build a parking lot over here. It's like, okay, well now that has a cost implication to this switch. Whatever that is.
No parking lots.
Yeah, right.
Parking the grass, I don't care, no parking lots.
You can walk it.
Spending money on that.
Walk the three.
Right, walk.
Yeah, and when you look at this view too, it's like, how do we know how far those track events are from the baseball fence?
Yep.
Are they fifty, seventy-five feet? Well, that's a long ways, you know, when you're hitting a follow ball, so.
Right. Where are they gonna set up?
Troy would have a better idea, okay, logistically, how much are we talking? Cause if you even shove those track events further to the track. I mean, you're you're gonna gain that distance from the baseball field.
Which would be less implication, I would guess, than worrying about the the field itself.
I think we've addressed a lot of our parking issues with this particular design. That's not to say people will not park on the grass, cause I'm certain that some will.
Park along the new road. Park along the new road.
You know that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
They might even watch a game from their car on that road.
Well, they do now.
Yep.
But I'm gonna ask my question again. Is there any concern with having the throwing events across the road?
I don't think so. I mean, I'm not the track coach and I'm certainly not coaching throws, but it, there are soccer or football. Track soccer complexes like this all over the place. Some folks have the pole vault in a whole different location across town inside of a school. So it's still in close proximity.
Yeah, and I think currently how, we currently have it set up, it's not across the road, but it's across that tree line.
Right.
Yeah, I I think just having an announcing system in place so that they can hear the different calls that are being made during a track meet. It would be essential and that would something we wouldn't take shortcuts on and we've had conversations with our Daktronic scoreboard company about. The sound system, but.
We've done fields too and LHB can figure this out where the, I think someone might have said it, but the triple jump, um, in the pole vault can be inside the track line.
Yes.
And it could be on the visitor's side and when it's football season, you have mats down and, you know, that's where they stand. That would get them out of the way and maybe that gives room to move shot put. I mean, you get a safety area for disc throw, right? Because of those accidents, but there's other ways to move things around is what I'm trying to say.
The the road doesn't bother me so much, Steve, because you you're talking people driving ten, fifteen miles per hour right there and not, I mean, they're all fair. And I think sometimes when you're piecing the puzzle together, when you find a a big piece and you can fit it on a spot where you're like, the spot that's. You know, kind of marked out for there at the intermediate school, not a lot of other stuff goes on that spot. So it could potentially be a really good use of that space potentially, but like you, you know, as I look up that, I I look at the. Northwest side of the complex going, hmm, is there room up there? Um, is there room on the northeast side? Are we getting too close? You know, it's like pu- putting a big puzzle together.
Right, well, the other part for me is you're gonna have to have a place to put everybody, right? So and I recognize that the parking lot graphic is nothing more than a graphic, but do we have a a concept of how many stalls that is?
That's an architectural design question. To give you a, to give you a perspective, that new elementary parking lot has fifty stalls. So if you look that bad, perhaps you can estimate.
Sixty, sixties.
Looks like about sixty.
From a stadium complex, I think we were planning on using the north parking lot at the high school now would be a lot more advantageous for parking at that. And to be honest, if you look at like right there, if you look at our west parking lot on the west side, like. In in relation at St. Chris Central's field, that's where they park to get to the St. Chris Central football field would be the equivalent of our west parking lot.
Yeah, I I've been to some sports complexes that you have to walk quite a ways to get to the football field or like. I, Duran used to be like in the middle of freaky town, you had to park like on a hill down like six blocks away.
I remember it.
Yeah.
And if you move down back here, you'll see where the visiting team bleachers are, those folks could park in the intermediate or middle school lots, cause there'd be an entrance on that side of the field.
Or even the middle school lot.
Yep, they'd both be available. That'd be a pretty short walk. I mean, Somerset went to referendum a few years ago and that was their whole issue was their parking patterns and traffic patterns. It was a nightmare. They redesigned all of that. If you've been down there, they did an excellent job in updating that.
Yeah, and I think we have to remember, like, people are coming to literally view an outside sport. So you're gonna be outside, whether you're walking or you're, or you're feeling the sport, you're outside, so.
Right.
Walk.
Well, I'm just only asking the question because I don't want, you know, we're so focused on on some of those structures. I don't wanna see that we're overlooking something.
Well, and I think, you know, the the parking lot that they have just west of the stadium there, you know, I think that can be a spot where you maximize. A lot of handicap parking spaces too for people that really honestly can't walk a great deal. And those who can can walk a couple hundred yards more potentially.
Gary, could you address the bathroom situation at the football soccer track complex?
So I mean, at this point, the thought was that 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 would just be affordable. And and any large, large events you could access the high school. Yeah, that that was again, like just trying to, I keep saying like the Hudson example of if you go down to Hudson, there's sixty toilets there. That are, they're solely because of some calculation that, you know, which is a million dollar.
Yep, number of seats in the stadium equals X bathrooms.
Yeah, yep.
Beth, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, do you have to vote on the design tonight? My only question is, is just because of the footing to the south, not knowing what type of footing you have. For the fields and not knowing what a price paid might be for a road to the south. And not knowing the footing you might have for a road to the south, i.e. price paid.
Nothing's getting voted on tonight.
Yeah, yeah, it's all information tonight. Hopefully, I don't know when soil loaings would ever come in.
Right, and after after the loaings are in and and LHB, I mean, this is just them quickly like plotting stuff on.
Yeah.
Once they get into the design and the grades and I, all that stuff, I mean, this is gonna tweak a little bit and and.
So once it's approved and it's a reel, um, then LHB will give us a map of where we can get soil loaings. And then we'll get on their schedule and if we don't get a lot of snow, you can do soil loaings in the winter. They do have rigs that go through the snow, which is cost more.
The weather pattern's looking favorable.
Right.
No, I didn't, I didn't. I looked at the forecast and so, and yeah, so we would be set to vote on this December eighteenth at our next board meeting. So that would be Monday is when we would vote on the actual layout of this. But we wouldn't have it all figured out. I mean, you're just voting on basically a potential plan, but obviously, those things are.
A a loose concept of of this and just like LHB did on on the referendum on the, I mean, they're gonna come at S D and D D and say. Here's where it it has evolved to. Are you guys okay with us proceeding?
Yes.
You know, the more detailed drawing, so you'll have a couple more chances to.
Unless you tell me otherwise, this is what I would bring to you on Monday.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the other thing, you can move the shot put discus to the west and just have the road go on that side of them.
It's more road, but.
What's that?
It's more road that way, but you can do it.
Oh, you know, a little bit, but you come out of the the turnaround or whatever, the intermediate right there or, yeah, the intermediate and go that way. But, you know, those are things that, you know, maybe Troy can play with a little bit and say.
It looked like they'd fit to the northwest of the football field though.
Yeah.
Right, like John was saying too, I mean, like Hudson's football, track stadium, all those junking events are within the.
Inside the track.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a, you know.
Yeah, yeah, they could be in the D area.
Yep.
If there's a question.
I just got some more.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have a visual on like the yearly plan? I get what you're saying, but I don't get what you're saying, like what phases are?
Oh, I can put it up in words, but I don't have a a graphics or a speech. Let me get to that on my my email and then.
While while you're doing that, can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
Super minor thing, but just an inquisitive question I have. If if the school district is looking at a truck, a food truck, right, or trailer. Would you design spots that that trailer would be earmarked for in this?
Yep.
Spot?
Yep, yep, that's definitely something that that LHB would put on there. It's like, you know, where where it would, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's definitely something that, that LHB would put on there. It's like, you know, where, where would, yeah, where would one go?
Where would it make sense? Where would you have the power run to?
Yep, exactly. Make sure that we have power there and water hookup, or whatever they need, you know.
Well, they could run a generator too, right? I mean.
Yeah, certainly. I'm just, I'm curious.
Because the FFA is talking about buying a food truck themselves. And then they would be willing, maybe possibly to, I don't wanna talk out of turn here, sorry Derek if you're listening, but that, then they would, could possibly rent it out to like other organizations within the district. And then, so, and it would be mobile and they could take it to a million different events and I, it's just a good moneymaker.
I think where Steve was going is, like, have like an actual landing pad for that.
Yeah, yeah. We've identified where the, where the, where the, um, the people flow is and where it makes sense to put it and then design a spot for that to be.
You gotta have a hard path, because if it, if it's raining or whatever, you gotta not track her through.
Right, right, and I'm all for generators, like for, you know, because you could use it at fall festival or you could take it somewhere else. But if you, if you're designing it with a location to go, an, an electrical drop, obviously there's cost there, but does it make sense or doesn't it?
Right, and that, yeah, I think for, yeah, for a while or whatever, if it's a parking, you know, if they need to take up a little bit of space in parking lot or something like that.
Yeah, we can make it work, other than you're thinking about people coming in and, and leaving the stadium.
Yep, yep.
Just, just a question.
There's a lot of power over, I mean, we've got our trailers lined up there right now. They all have power.
Right.
I mean, it totally makes sense, like the, the whole concession, I mean, you're just, there's never gonna be a good spot with the one concession stand that you build. So it'll always be, well, that's too far away from the baseball, so we just do mobile over, you know, out of the back of someone's vehicle.
Right, right. I get it.
I'm a fan. I like it. I, yeah, I like the whole mobile thing way better than the, yeah.
I'm unable to project onto the screen, so I'm trying to send my thing to Becky, but my internet is not connected.
And I'm, I'm just hearing like all those schools using turf, like River Falls and Hudson and, you know, there's the size difference. How, how many staff people are they utilizing to maintain, you know, the turf versus natural grass?
When I talked to, I believe it was Bob Schmidt from Osseo, he was retired now. You know, Osseo is in their tenth year with that. And they have a company, I think it's called AstroTurf, come in annually and prep the field. They, they do the magnet, pick up stuff, they fluff it, do what has to be done, add granular that has to be done. And that basically kinda sets it for the year.
The stuff I, the stuff I read online was that you, I'm, I'm gonna use the word fluff the field. I don't know what the, you know, to move all that stuff around.
You gotta rake it, level it.
Rake it, move, move the, that's, that rubber.
Pin fill.
Fill around like every hundred hours. So it's, it's like once every month, month and a half.
Yeah, forty, forty to a hundred dollars, yeah.
And spray.
And spray, disinfect it, clean it. So, there's upkeep to it. It's not no maintenance. This is less maintenance, a different kind of maintenance. But there's definitely maintenance, none, none the less to it. But I think that, you know, like we said, we talked about our, our team that we have here and we, you know, feel confident that they can probably get it done without adding more people, but they should know what they're doing.
Well, that's what I was thinking about in September. I mean, unless it's raining, I don't, that's the only time we see Reggie is if it's raining, because he's checking in with us, telling us, guys, I don't know if I can get the field to line today, like, like on a, September and October, what percentage of your day is mowing or lining a soccer or football field?
So, I remember I gave the presentation in this room and we did some examples, forgot where it was. But they had natural grass, and this is gonna be at the pro level by, by the way, but they had six hundred hours of mowing. And, but I'll just say this, a total of eight hundred and seventy hours of people hours. And artificial turf was three hundred and fifty-five. For the same square footage, so. That was in Cincinnati for whatever it's worth.
Yeah, and, but, and I, it's not a secret in this room. I have not been a fan of the artificial turf, but even I can see the value of what we're going to save by putting in the artificial turf. Hopefully it will be safer, and if it's maintained properly, it will be a big investment. So, a compromise is gonna be key here, and even I can compromise to say, I can see the savings and the benefit to the district and being a good financial steward of the district, it makes sense financially.
I think it's great for the city too, though. You're talking about a potential showpiece for people looking to move to town if you can find a house, right, or you build a house.
Yeah, there's a lot of other factors there.
With the bigger track.
But we're building houses too. We're building houses.
With the, with the bigger track, my understanding is you can host some other types of events we're not hosting now, so you're bringing revenue dollars to town?
Yep, you can host a sectional track meet with a nine lane track.
And then if we're talking about soccer under the lights?
Yep, we can, I mean, we can host colleges to play on our baseball fields and they'll, they'll pay to play the spring. People are very anxious to play on a turf field, just because of the conditions.
So it's a good, it's a good piece to bring some additional, a revenue to town.
Yeah, I liked hearing that we could rent out our fields.
Yeah. But I, I mean, the, the turf is gonna be new to all of us, and so we're obviously gonna need some education and some professional development. And I think it's great to bring the experts in the room and tell us how to do it. I think even on our grass surfaces, a nice refresher from the experts would be nice too, so.
George told me that he was at a meeting where they talked about schools that had issues with their turf. One of them mowed it. And one of them, one of them brought mirrors out so that they could see the band, the band could see themselves practicing.
Baldwin.
And melted the field.
So the question you asked, uh, this is information that relates to the question that you asked. The first thing you see is just a list of the athletics advisory committee. There's thirty-three people on there. About a third of those people, people are not school employees, other than the fact that they're employees as coaches. The second batch of information, these are all the times we've met since March eighth and what the topic was. Tonight's our seventeenth conversation on athletics and Monday will be number eighteen apparently. Then if you go a little further, Becky, the answer to your question. The first phase includes all of those bulleted points. I, I don't wanna read it to you, but I guess I'll read it to you. Move the football complex to the south of Warrior Way, football playing surface is artificial turf, nine lane track, new lights at football soccer track complex, moving the game field for soccer to the football field, removal of the present varsity baseball field, because it's in that location. Addition of a new varsity baseball field in the southeast corner. Playing surface for varsity baseball is artificial turf. The new JV is, uh, the new junior varsity baseball field to the west of the varsity field. The playing surface there would be natural grass. Acquisition of Jorgensen Field and an upgrade of Jorgensen Field. That's all said to be phase one. That's six point five.
But that's also moving your bleachers and press box, correct?
And that, you'll see in additional information right below those bulleted points. Uh, we intend to move the existing bleachers and press box to the football field location. The idea is to disassemble in the present location and reassemble in the new location. And then the add-ons, which I think speaks to your point, is the addition of lights. This could be in summer of twenty-five or twenty-six, or it could be in the summer of twenty-four if cash allows. Addition of lights at varsity and JV, lights at Jorgensen, public address systems, baseball and softball. We talked about that actually last week. Parking lot next to the tennis courts, parking lot to the east of the high school, sort of behind the high school. Addition of youth soccer fields and then the road exiting campus that we've been talking about. Those are all add-ons, if you will, contingencies, but that first batch of information is your phase one with certainty.
So, the big field in the middle and the two fields to the left of the, all those.
All of them.
Yes, yes, where the cursor, where you see the cursor, that is your, that's six point, well, that's the whole, yes. Six point five takes care of that, those three pieces.
The grass field would not, the grass field wouldn't be playable by then.
No, not the grass field would not be playable in September. That would not work. So the add-ons are things such as lights and roads and those youth soccer fields in subsequent seasons and subsequent years. Or again, if money allows to do that, if you have eight million available, that would take care of the rest of what you see. But that's a topic for another day, so to speak.
And the board would prioritize those additional add-ons as the money allowed.
One thing that, that we've talked about, but I wanna make sure the public gets a chance to hear, is scoreboards. So can you guys talk about potential or options for scoreboards?
Jeff, go ahead.
We met with Daktronics last week. We're looking to update scoreboards at all of our facilities. Some schools in our conference, you'll notice in their gyms, they have video scoreboards. There's a major price tag to those. Having to purchase, I think it's ten scoreboards throughout all of these facilities. We're weighing our options. We haven't contacted any local donors yet. But none of this would come out of this budget. Our scoreboards would all be fundraised in donations and sponsorships through our community.
We're looking at the whole price tag being sponsorship via sponsors in the Amory area. That's our hope.
And what was the name of the scoreboard company?
Daktronics.
And where is that from?
I don't know where they're located.
I think they have multiple locations.
Yeah, they just. Yeah, they just installed the scoreboard at St. Croix Falls and Osseo this fall.
Okay, so they did the one in St. Croix. Is there like a local one in St. Croix Falls? There was some talk about that situation?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not familiar with the scoreboard company in St. Croix Falls. Is that what the question was?
I thought there was a local person. I think Josh must know what I'm talking about.
I, I don't know the story with what happened at St. Croix Falls or Osseo. I know that there was a vendor from that area. I think he might have actually did the luck gym. The hell have you worked in that gym?
I have, yep.
So, but I don't know anything about it.
So we've been engaged with Daktronics for approximately a year and sponsorship was the idea from the get-go. And I believe we will have all sorts of folks here in town that would like to weigh in as sponsors. I'll go on record as saying right now, the video scoreboard, which is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar price tag, I'm not so sure that I'm in favor of it for a variety of reasons. One, I don't think you get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars used out of it. Two, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And three, it's a whole process to make sure that you have someone capable of programming it to its fullest capacity. And that's a full-time job in and of itself. So I would be inclined to not do that and do your scoreboards in the gyms where you've got your score, your running time. And you could even have your, your players on the, on the, on the board and the points they've gotten, falls they have and so forth. But a video board, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I know that's just one of them, that's a lot of money.
Compared to what Sean just mentioned, the alternate would be about thirty thousand. Now, we're looking for updated sound system too in some of these facilities, which is a big part of it, but.
Your outdoor facilities, uh, those scoreboards are decrepit. They are way past their shelf life. I mean, I've said this in many, many arenas, if you don't come to the game at the beginning of the name, game, you will not know if it's a one, a four, an eight or a two. You just, you'll, you'll have to ask, because you won't be able to figure it out by the board.
Well, we have definitely held our breath during some football games here, hoping that the scoreboard was gonna make it through the game.
Uh, we were just gonna grab the, the volleyball numbers. We were just gonna make you stand out there with the volleyball numbers.
It's, it's, it's been a good old scoreboard for us for a number of years.
It's done, it's done, yeah. Any other items on athletics? Because I do have one item that's come up to me and emailed twice that I'd like A to address in regards to the retention ponds. We have had some conversation. I sent you an email. Are there any other items?
I, I, I would have one thing. So, you know, like the youth soccer field and stuff that are to the north there. I know for those that are understanding the layout, I mean, those green spaces exist whether you, like, they, they can play soccer up there tomorrow if they wanted to. I mean, there's green spaces up there, so I, that's.
What they do with youth soccer now, they line a green space.
Right.
They don't do anything. They just line it and put goals down, and they already have goals.
Yeah, what this is depicting is you tr- clear the tree lines, you clear the current track, you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the two email inquiries I had, and I, I thought it would be a good idea for you to address it here in public, is the retention pond and the, the safety risk. I think there is an impression that those areas will be full of water, and that's not accurate. Could you talk to us about that?
So they're in, they're called infiltration basins, which are different than retention pond where sometimes we're driving, you'll see that, you know, it's, the water's always there. These are infiltration basins that are, their intent is, in a rain event, that's where the water goes and then it, within a twenty-four hour period, it drains out into the, into groundwater. So you're not, the DNR requires that you can't shed your wa- what your water off onto someone else's property. So you have to maintain it within the property. And then these ponds allow it to infiltrate, so there's a special type of sand and soil that goes in the bottom of them. But, so there should not be standing water in them, except for in the, in a rain event.
The hundred year event.
In a hundred year event, it's a two, there's, I think it's two foot of.
Two and a half feet, is it?
Two and a half feet between that and where it runs out.
If you got two and a half feet of rains, what we're saying, and one shot?
Yep.
That's a lot of rain.
Yep.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Right, so I mean, I, again, it's, it's, I, I understand it, because it comes up, trust me, it comes up all, all the time. But it's, it's not a holding pond, so there, there should not be water in there all the time. It's only in the event of the rain, and most likely you're not gonna see it.
And that's near the elementary. The elementary's to your left of the screen. It's hard to tell with all the lines and stuff. Do we have any, anyone that signed up for community comments? Could you grab that, Tracy? Okay, all right.
Last but not least, did you watch YouTube and the Amish moving that great big shed?
I have seen that one.
I'm thinking that's what we need to move our bleachers. We have four hundred and some kids in high school.
Four hundred and twenty-five.
Four twenty-five.
That's a lot of people.
You know, you just gotta get the band leaders that march in the key positions and just.
We, we did ask a home mover up in Bryce Lake to give us a quote, the, the press box, and we're like, are you sure we can move that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, no problem. And he said, drive really slow when you come.
Really slow.
The good news, it was right on our budget, so.
Right.
Moved our existing press box, so. Cool thing, it was a handwritten quote.
I would expect nothing less from there. I would expect nothing less from there.
I'll do that.
No community comments?
No.
And anybody got anything else? We're good to go?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Shar, second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, closed. Thank you much for coming.